That'll bring a lot of money in. Five thousand a summer.
Move back the time?
So you have the movie socks. And he showed some decent thing. Who's rated T, but it should've been on.
We need a motion to open the meeting at seven thirty.
Motion to open the meeting at seven thirty.
I second it.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the September third, two thousand fourteen zoning and board of appeals meeting. My name is Tom Wakefield. I'll introduce some members. To my immediate right is Kathy Franson. And we have a... I'm gonna look at him to make sure that's who it is. Yeah, we have Chris Reddy is here tonight. Jane Moran. And then Dan McDonald. And I'd like to welcome a new member, an alternate, Mark McCabe is here. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
And our clerk is Julie House. I'm gonna refer to the agenda, but we are gonna, to expedite, we're gonna just switch it around, but we got a couple of routine issues we'd like to take care of quickly here. And then, then we'll get going. So, let's see, we have this one. We're gonna jump down to, ooh, Birch, the Birch? The applications, two thousand seven dash two, White Bridge Village. There'll be no continuance, 'cause we have a copy of the deed. So, I guess we would make a motion to close the file at this point? Okay, I'll make a motion to close the file on White Bridge Village.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Yes, it's now moot.
It's now, yeah, the town owns the property. Pass this down, you guys can look at the deed.
Yes, just one second.
Okay. Okay. Any discussions?
No.
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. unanimous. All right, Chris. Okay, we're gonna jump down to application two thousand fourteen dash ten has been made by Heather O'Toole for transfer of business ownership of Agnes...
Strecker.
Strecker, I've got it, mine's fallen out here. A dance studio located at nine oh eight Salem Street. Hi, how are you?
I'm Heather.
You're Heather, okay. What happened, the first year, we streamlined the process here, and this is the first one we've had, so what happens is, we've allowed you to come in without a full application, and you've written a letter, but you're gonna be subject to the conditions that was approved prior to. And so what we'll do is, I'll make a motion that we approve these, we'll give you a copy of them, and...
Yep.
It's a pretty streamlined process, so...
I second it.
Second, second if I, Chris. Any discussion?
Was there a fee charged on the transfer?
Uh, no. No, this is just a regulatory thing. We changed that on just identical transfers.
Okay.
So, okay?
That's all.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set. But what we're gonna do is, before you leave, Julie will give you a copy of the prior conditions of approval. Or you wanna send it to her?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just a transfer of ownership on a dance studio at, at nine oh eight Salem Street. Same scene.
What I can do is, I can type up the new decision and put your information on it.
We'll send it to you.
Okay.
Okay? Application two thousand fourteen dash eleven has been made by Cliff and Mary Clark for transfer of business ownership of the Leo's Pizza Shop located at one eighty Main Street. And it's my understanding that they would like this to be continued to the October, what day, October first meeting, as they are out of town. Any discussion? I make a motion that this gets postponed to October first, two thousand fourteen.
Second it.
Second, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Okay, so that's... Let me check here. Okay, so we're down to application two thousand fourteen dash nine has been made by McCabe, and I guess that's Lingo's Realty Trust, Brad Lingo's owner of a special, owner for a special permit to operate a storage facility for oil truck and equipment for Old Town Fuel Company in further variance due to an error on the side, setbacks, requirements regarding the property located at sixteen Nelson Street Lot forty-nine, parcel forty-seven dash two thousand, oh, excuse me, dash oh-two-five, industrial zone according to the Groveland bylaw, oh, seven point seven, nine oh five, point nine oh seven. And I have to say at this point that we have, our newest member will be leaving because he has...
I have to recuse myself from that, 'cause I'm the McCabe on that.
That's right. Thank you, and as soon as you can come back after...
Is there anything else after that, or...
Uh, yes, yep, there is.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thanks.
It should be about...
That was the fastest meeting I've ever been to.
Yeah, it should be about two or three minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, applicant. We didn't get the table, I'm sorry we didn't get the table out tonight, because we had another meeting before and it didn't happen. But you can come up front and sit in the chairs, and we won't bite.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Attorney Mitchell Kroner.
Okay.
Representing Brad Leggles, who is the remaining trustee.
For the record, Attorney Mitchell Kroner, representing Brad Leggles, who is the successor, who is the trust, current trustee after Mr. McCabe is no longer a trustee, but as he stated, he was involved at some point.
I have a handout here with some material for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that this matter came before the board at the June meeting. I was not representing Mr. Leggles at that time. And I understand that Mr. Greenwood filed a appeal of the building inspector's decision. And the board at that time wanted Mr. Leggles to come in and file a request for special permit in the industrial zone for his business, as well as requesting a variance because of an error, error in the setbacks. As far as what I've handed you, let me just run through it, so it'll be in the record. First document is a notice of no appeal signed by the town clerk. Second document is a building permit checklist. Third document is a letter from the fire department. Fourth is a letter from the building inspector to Mr. Sorenson on the planning board. Then we have a letter from the water and sewer department. An email from Mr. Sorenson to the town clerk stating that a special permit was approved at the June two thousand ten planning board hearing. Copy of the assessor's card that has a picture of the building on the second page. Copy of the original eighteen ninety-seven plan from the registry of deeds. Copy of a site plan prepared by Oak Engineering filed with the planning board. A certificate of occupancy which has an incorrect date on it. The date, as you'll see, is the same as the building permit from the building inspector. Obviously, that was a mistake. The occupancy permit was issued after the planning board hearing. Next document is the deed into the trust. And the last document is the resignation of Mr. McCabe as a trustee. So we're here tonight, from our perspective, on a corrective situation. Again, this is a copy of the site plan. I've given you a reduced version of that. The property was purchased in two thousand ten by the trust. And basically, just to give you a little perspective, this is what the property looked like prior to the purchase. It was basically a dump, dumping ground for tires, automobile parts, and other items. So that's, that's what the parcel was prior to it being purchased. Again, to give a little perspective, this was the original registry of deeds plan. I know it's hard to picture that this is what it looked like in eighteen ninety-seven, but it was laid out most likely as a series of camps. Obviously, very few of these lots have been built on, but they're all six thousand square foot lots. And I've circled Mr. Leggles' property, which is down here between Sewell Street and Nelson So we really have two issues. One is the use. The second is the setbacks. Let me address the setbacks first. I believe the building inspector was here at the last meeting and stated that he was incorrect. He had given the setbacks to Mr. Leggles for a residential district, which was thirty feet front setback and fifteen feet on the side. The error was compounded by the engineer, who drew the plan with those same setbacks. Under the industrial bylaw, as you're probably aware, the required setbacks are fifty feet in the front and twenty-five on the side. So, we're asking, without going through all the tests for a hardship, basically, we're asking for a variance due to error. I mean, that's as simple as I can make it. We can argue all night whether it meets a hardship or not. The quest, the issue is, Mr. Leggles did not have an attorney at the time, relied on his engineer, relied on the building inspector, and therefore, the building was built with the residential setbacks. Just to get it in the record, I will make the argument that under this plan, these lots are pre-existing non-conforming. And because they are pre-existing non-conforming, under Mass General Law's chapter forty-eight, section six, an owner is given certain protection as a grandfathered lot. In our industrial district, you're not allowed to build a residence. You can only have an industrial use. The only way you could put up an industrial building on one of these lots would be to apply the residential setbacks. So I'm making that argument, just to get it into the record, that you would only have to meet residential setbacks and not industrial because of the way these lots are configured, and that they were duly recorded lots prior to zoning. The second issue, in terms of a special permit for a business use, again, Mr. Leggles went to the planning board for site plan review. He went to the planning board for aquifer protection bylaw. I'm gonna submit into the record an environmental report from ransom engineering, in, I'm sorry, ransom environmental, in Newburyport. And I'll let the board look at this. That was a very thorough analysis of water table, aquifer protection, MSDS list for any types of chemicals. And I will let Mr. Leggles explain when I get through a little bit what the business is. So I'll submit this as part of the record as well. This was the environmental report submitted to the planning board.
To the chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as I've done in the past, for the past thirty years at these hearings, not in front of this board, but I will raise the issue again, that under a nineteen eighty-four SCID versus the planning board of Braintree Appeals Court case, that case which some of you may be familiar with, basically states that it's improper to have a zone, business or industrial zone, without any use as of right. Groveland was told about this many years ago, in the Eagle Builders case, by Judge Sullivan of the land court. I understand the planning board is working our renewed zoning bylaw, which includes a schedule of uses. But again, I wanna put that into the record, that the current Groveland zoning bylaw violates the SCID case, in that there's no use as of right in the industrial zone. I'm gonna have a few words in conclusion, but I'm gonna have Brad basically describe a little about what is, what is at the building.
Basically, it's a home heating company, oil company. We go out with the trucks empty, fill them up, do our deliveries, come back. Trucks are always empty. The fire chief was over, I'd say about two or three days ago. We have inspections every other year. He walked through the building. He said that it was the cleanest building he's ever seen. Everything passed with flying colors. We keep three oil trucks in there, empty, and a service truck and equipment. So it's basically a storage facility. We don't operate a business. Everything is in my home, computers, telephones. So we get the trucks, we leave, we come back, we leave again. Nobody hangs around, nobody works in there. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Just to, just to follow up on that, the building has no septic system. I think part of the history of this, over the, over the years, that the building inspector interpreted this as, simply as a garage. We can argue whether it's a business, not a business, business use, not a business use. I went down there myself. Basically, he has his two oil trucks and a service truck. There's no office there, no bathroom facilities. It's simply a storage facility.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Leggles, did you say that it was three trucks and then a service truck? Or, so there's four total?
Correct.
Four total, okay, so, but he said three, so I...
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So that, that's what's, what's kept there. I think that's pretty much all I have to say at this point, other than that the planning board thoroughly reviewed this. Mr. Leggles had to pay for Camet Engineering, who's the review agent for the planning board to review it. It was reviewed by a professional engineer by the town. All safeguards have been taken in terms of the aquifer protection district. As Brad just stated, he's monitored by the fire department, has to comply with other state requirements as far as oil trucks. And we would appreciate this petition being allowed. I do wanna address, I'm not sure the board actually ever ruled on Mr. Greenwood's petition, so I just wanna request, just state a couple things about that. First of all, he's not a directed butter, so I question whether he has standing. As you can see on this plan here, Mr. Greenwood is in the front, he's three hundred feet away from this property, so I question how he's affected at all by trucks that enter the property, leave the property once a day and return once a day. And I guess the overriding argument is, he's come in four years after the fact, after the building's been built, we watched it being built, took no action at that time. And I would request that appeal number two thousand fourteen dash zero eight be dismissed as well by this board. Thank you.
I've got a couple questions, if I could. On June twenty-third, two thousand ten, there was a letter from the planning board. And in that letter, there were some recommendations that were asked as... And in that letter, there were some recommendations that were asked as to the construction of the building relative to some drainage issues. Are you familiar, you've got a blank stare. Are you familiar with?
Yeah. We were asked if, suggested we put dry wells.
Yeah.
Where it's sand, when we were doing construction, it's nothing but sand. So when the water comes off the gutters, it just goes back into the ground. Everything's an impervious surface. We didn't put any asphalt around the building.
Hold on a minute. I've got an engineer's report here that asks for, and I suspect that the engineer did an onsite investigation prior to the construction. So who made the determination that it didn't have to be put in?
We were in the planning board meeting.
No, no, I got the letter from the planning board, says that you needed to do that. So.
Mr. Chairman, that's from the, this is the Camet Engineering letter?
Yeah.
This is the review agent. This wasn't, this was the suggestions.
Yeah.
Suggestions from the review agent, not the planning board decision. In other words, this was the review agent.
I understand that, but, but why would you have, why would you have a review of an engineer reviewing the project and not adhere to what he asked you? That's, that's like, why would you hire a guy to look at it and not adhere to what he's asking to do? What's the sense of having an engineer look at it? If you say, oh, we don't need to do that because we've determined that it's, it's all sand and it's an aquifer and, or it's impervious and it's just going to, no problem. I'm not, I'm not sure where that comes, where, how, I can't square that. With my, my, my advanced age, I don't see how that works. I mean, someone, someone hired this Camet Engineering to review it, and his suggestions was that there would be some dry wells installed.
Correct. He suggested we do dry wells and he asked us why we should.
Why were they not installed?
We, the argument was made that we're going to do the gutters and downsides. It's an impervious surface, it's all sand, it's going to recharge the aquifer. It's not going to drain off on anybody else's property. And that's suffice to the meeting.
The planning board has a couple of representatives here. Perhaps they could address that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, no, no, excuse me, you'll get a chance. Let me, let me just, let me rephrase this. The planning board hires, or someone hired, an engineer?
Correct.
Okay. We agree with that?
Correct.
And at that point, the engineer makes recommendations.
Okay.
Okay. Who determined that you didn't have to adhere to the recommendations? Was it the planning board said you didn't have to? Or was it the landowner, i.e. yourself, that determined that you didn't have to do that?
I would assume it's the planning board, because we were there that night and they granted a special permit. And we never got a copy of this letter from Camet Engineering until just before the other meeting. It was granted special permit. I never saw anything from Woody.
Because it also mentions in here about the requirement for a special permit.
We got the special permit from the planning board.
From the zoning board of appeals.
He never saw, we never got the letter. It went to the planning board and that was it. Planning board issued the special permit that night. The letter, you know, when I asked Bob O'Hanley the other day if he had anything for the special permit, we got the letter.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I mean, we can argue form over substance or substance over form all night.
With all due respect, I'm asking questions and I'd like to have the answers, okay? So you can take your forms over whatever, okay? I'm asking a question, I expect to get the answers.
Well, we've answered it.
No, I don't think you did.
He never saw the letter.
Well, then, shame on him. Someone, who, who paid for the engineer?
We paid.
Okay. And the engineer, you paid for the engineer that you didn't know what he said?
He came to the planning board meeting.
And you didn't know what he said?
We said we, we heard what he said at the meeting.
And here it is, right here. And why'd you just say you didn't? You paid for an engineer who went out and looked at the site and said, this is what you have to do. He recommended it.
He recommended it and he said, why, you know, it was basically, why don't you think you need them? And then I gave the reasons and that was it.
He's the, he's the planning board's review agent.
I understand that. But, but someone, someone paid for this, this engineer to review the project?
To review it.
And that's a recommendation?
I'm sure the planning board will tell you, they don't adopt the review agent's recommendations 100 percent. Mr. Legals had his own engineer.
I mean, I gotta tell you, there's a lot of issues on this whole project that doesn't pass the straight face test, okay? This is one of them. I don't know why it's before us four years henceforth, but the fact is that there's some issues here that shouldn't have happened. Okay? We're all big boys here. This shouldn't have happened. The setback should not have been 30 feet, when there were 50 feet in industrial zone. Okay? Shouldn't have happened, period. Okay? Period. Shouldn't have happened.
You have the letter from the building.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, it shouldn't have happened, period. Okay? So you hire, you hire and you pay for an engineer to review it, the review, the engineer makes recommendations, and you at the meeting, you heard them.
Correct.
Okay? And you didn't do it. You.
Where's that report I gave you? Ransom? No, ransom. You better, I see that.
I, I, see, I don't understand. You had to have known that you're in industrial zone, because if you, the use, we're not, we're not, we're not debating the use of the building, okay? Industrial zone. The aquifer was addressed at the planning board because of empty trucks, probably concrete impervious surfaces they're going to sit on. I don't, I'm not privy to, I can read the, the total report, but I've been around long enough to know how that works. But the fact of the matter is, you paid or reimbursed for this particular report. And then, you know, four years later, I'm reading the report and I'm saying, jeez, it says right here that he wanted you to put this, 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 and you say, oh, well, we didn't need to because, you know, we, we, you determined that you didn't need to.
I didn't determine, I asked him, and it was an argument of the point.
Well, it doesn't make, it doesn't, this letter doesn't say that, that upon further conversation with Mr. Legals, that, that, that we decided that you don't need to do this. Doesn't say that.
We handed out the planning board.
Oh, those are recommendations from the review agent.
I, well, what's a recommendation? Why you hire a review?
Because it's two engineers. He had his engineer, he paid for his engineer, and he paid for the planning board's engineer.
But, but who did he go before?
The planning board.
Did he go before his engineer or the planning board?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I hear what you're saying, and, you know, you have a layperson here who's not an expert in the, in the, in the field of, I'm assuming, you know, correct on that. Hires the experts and, and follows their lead and guidance in, in good faith. You know, I think in, in recommendations, the word itself, it might be a recommendation, but it has discretion. So if, if it's mandatory, you know, I think they would have said this is a must or it shall be done. And, and if there was, you know, if it was optional in any way, I don't think that it's, it should be as stringently interpreted. You know, the planning board is the ultimate decider of, you know, of, of, of what the um.
You're right.
Mandatory requirements are and what, and there is some discretion, because, you know, it's, we all wear shoes, we don't all wear size nine, so there has to be some latitude in give and take in the process. And so there were some recommendations. And, you know, from my experience, you get 50 experts, you can get 50 answers. So, you know, somewhere there's a reasonable parameter and boundary as to what should be done and what.
Dan, you're 100 percent right.
And what, and what's discretionary, so I.
Dan, I don't disagree with you. So what, what I'm going to do is, I see Mr. Solson is here. Could you come up front?
Sure.
Could I just have one question?
Go ahead.
I'd like to know from you guys if the engineering report you have in front of you is different than the recommendations here.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
That was my question.
Wally.
Good evening.
This, this, for the record, Wally Solson, are you still planning?
Yeah, planning board chairman.
Yeah. Are you familiar with this letter that I have in my hand dated?
Is it June 23rd?
Yeah, yeah.
I've got copies of this.
Yeah, so, so what I, what I don't understand, in, in, in the process of going through the, the planning board review for the aquifer, you had hired, someone had hired this, this Camet to come out and do a review, and that's what he recommended to the planning board. So I would assume that at the meeting, he gave a presentation and said, these are my recommendations.
So I can't recall exactly if, he usually does come out. Okay. The June 23rd letter is the initial review. So, so how that process works for us is that the applicant pays for the third-party review, which they did. We've been doing this 23, 24 years now, going through since we rewrote the subdivision control law rewrite and the site review process too, which I think was 17 years ago, we rewrote that one. And what it would do is, the plans would go off for initial review package, and there would be a letter coming back with the first word. The June 23rd letter is the initial review of this. And then it goes back to the engineer, so it would have been back to ransom and also to Oak Engineering, and the two engineer groups duke it out, so to speak, to come to solutions to the problems. And then there's a final review that's issued, at which time, that's when the board does its vote, embraces the recommendations of our engineer, which in this case would have been Camet at that time, and also explain if, what happened between the initial review, if there was anything left over, basically. Sometimes just housekeeping items and the like. We do see the dry wells in there that are on the initial engineering review, and also the soil tests that were mentioned later in this report on that. So does the board 100 percent of the time take everything into consideration that is done by the initial engineer? Not necessarily, but what we do do is, we'll embrace the final report and we'll get a briefing from the engineer, what they recommend or what they suggest. I see a question.
Yeah. Where is that final report?
Yeah.
The final report, I think, is issued on, again, we don't have our files here, so I'm just looking at what, what was presented here on this. It's on the, I think it's the July 9 letter. But I think the solution, the, the problem that I'm seeing here, it's not really, not necessarily a problem, but I, but I see where you're going on this, is that we have a recommendation for some dry wells. We have some soil tests that were mentioned in there. Do I have the letter back from Ramsey's Engineering, back over to Camet to explain why they, why that neutralized itself? No, I don't have that in front of me. Is it easy for a dry well installation to be installed at this point in time to comply with the initial report? Most likely. I don't think a dry well's a big, a big thing to do, as far as that goes. Talking with the other board members, our site review, Mr. Bob O'Hanley, he most likely was out there during, during construction. He's always out there checking everything. But he also would probably feel more comfortable with the, with the dry wells going in the board to take a look from the initial report. Unfortunately, I'm missing a piece of why it was eliminated in the final. I don't have that with me to explain that to you.
So it's not addressed in the July 7th, 9th letter?
It's not addressed in the, in the July, it's under the general comments section. But again, these, these aren't our files, so I don't, I don't have the notes or anything to look at.
Okay.
I mean, I guess to get, to get to the point, if you're going to issue a special permit, hopefully, Mr. Legals is certainly in agreement if it would help with the situation, that he, that this board could add a new requirement as part of your permit, which he would adhere to, if that is a matter of concern. Since we don't, we don't have, you know, we don't have his engineer here.
No, I understand, but, but, and I, I'm just sort of a black and white guy, but I've also been involved in numerous, numerous site plan reviews, where, where, where the boards do have a third party making recommendations. And I've never, you know, unless, unless they came to an agreement, and then I would, I would assume that past this June 23rd, 2010, there'd be another letter from, from Camet that said, upon further review and consultation, I no longer feel that we need these dry wells. You see, this is how that works. That's my experience. And I have firsthand knowledge of how that works.
No, I understand, I understand that.
So that's how you, you, it's called CYA. And, and I suspect that if, if the engineer was going to vary from his letter of, of June 23rd, 2010, then he would have documented it to say, oh, upon further review and discussion, I agree that these won't be necessary. That would, I mean, that, it didn't happen, so.
But, but again, it's the planning board that decides which engineer. You've got his engine, you've got Mr. Legals' engineer saying one thing, and granted, he's paying for them both.
However, the one the planning board is, has, has hired or has engaged is this one right here, not yours.
Correct.
And so there's, there's a different fiduciary relationship to the one that you've hired and the one the planning board's hired. There's, there's different requirements and different thoughts and, et cetera. There's another gentleman, Bob.
Jim.
Excuse me, Jim.
Yeah. As of last night, I'm talking to Bob O'Hanley. We, Jim Freire with Groveland Planning Board, as of last night, just talking to Bob O'Hanley about this coming up tonight, we both felt like this thing really had to be done in that area, because the building had expanded above and beyond what we originally were told it was going to be. So, you know, the dry wells aren't a hard thing to do. If he's willing to do it, I think, you know, you just thought of putting it into your facility and that's it.
So you guys didn't decide that they didn't need them? There wasn't anything in the?
Not that I.
Can I just ask a question?
I mean, generally, you would, you would follow it up with a waiver.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you, wouldn't you give a special permit with conditions?
That's, that's generally what you.
Okay, so, but the condition, so was that a condition?
Yes.
I'm looking at the dates here, between the, the June 23 presentation, there was another meeting and site review on June 29, and then, and then the project report was on July 9. It did come up in the June 23 for sure, because it's the last year, right? Okay? The solution, what was the solution to that problem? I'm finding security net over there. It goes under the general comments, but on the closing of the report of July 9, it's absent. So it was certainly addressed, okay? But again, Jim was spot on with what he just said about a few things for a simple solution to this problem. So based where, thank you, where things had changed a little bit with the setback and everything like that, and although it is impervious soil, it's a very quick solution to go back to the June 23, which would address all the issues at the time. And that's lack of our files to see why that actually was addressed differently perhaps.
I mean, just to put it in perspective, Mr. Chairman, and I will let you look at this, there's a plan here called floor slab secondary containment design.
Yeah.
More importantly, that, that lists many conditions, all of which we're adhered to as far as protection, place a four-inch-thick fiber reinforced concrete slab over sheeting, I mean, various, place a 10-millimeter polyethylene sheeting over a graded base, just various protections here, you can look at.
Yep.
So that there wouldn't be any leakage. I mean, I understand your concern about drainage.
Now, now, let me ask you a question. Is there a as-built or a sign-off that this was done?
Tom, he was at the water department, came down to watch every step of the foundation.
Okay.
And satisfied him.
And is, did he sign off somewhere?
It's that check sheet, I think.
Right. He's on the water district one?
Yeah.
Conservation.
We'll get to, we're going to get to you guys.
Is that the conservation guy or?
No, it's the water department.
Okay.
I got, I got a letter.
I saw a letter from the water department, too.
It says, Town of Groveland Water, but this is June 23.
Yeah.
It says that, did you, did you install a monitoring well?
Nope. We contacted the chief at the time and.
It says right here.
It says right here, it says, I'll read this for the record, okay? This is to Walter Sorensen, chairman of the planning board, from Thomas D. Cusack Jr., superintendent regarding 16 Nelson Street, building permit 1099. Please be advised, a project related to permit 1099 has been reviewed, and the following conditions apply. A list of equipment that will be kept on the premises must be submitted to the water and sewer district department. Vehicle and equipment maintenance included washing is prohibited. Spill cleanup must be kept on-site at all times. A monitoring well as listed on page four of the applicant's plan must, and I'll just repeat, must be installed. The department will inspect and containment area during the, during and after construction. And it says, "Please forgive my tardiness on this issue. Sincerely, Tom D. Cusack Jr." So, the way I read that, it says that the monitoring well as listed on page four of the applicant's plan must be installed.
We went back to Tom with it, and he wanted it for a release, but there hasn't been a release. He suggested we put it in. I went back to him and said, "We hired Clement to do it," and John never proceeded with the, with the well.
So, was the well there today?
No, it's not. And Tom knows that, I had a meeting with him, and he asked, and I said, "It wasn't in yet."
Why isn't it in?
Tom specified if there's a release, he wants it. He asked it for it to be there prior to release, and I said, "Tom, there's not going to be a release." So, if there was a release, that's what the engineering companies all said, "We'll put it in at that time."
Doesn't say that here. See, this is four years later, and all we can do is, as I said earlier, black and white. I'm reading the black and white. And the black says, "A monitoring well as listed on page four of the applicant's plan must be installed." Now, it doesn't say that we've had further conversations, and that until you have a release, that you don't have to do it. It doesn't say that here. And that's all we have to go on, is what is the black and white, is that it to us.
But again, this is a recommendation.
No, no, this is not a recommendation. Now, let me read this again. Maybe I'm not reading it clearly. I'll read a little slower for you. Says, "A monitoring well as listed on page four of the applicant's plan." Now, read it again. "A monitoring well as listed on page four of the applicant's plan," okay? You with me so far?
Yes.
Okay? Then it says, "Must be installed." Doesn't say that it has to be installed after release, we'll negotiate a different time. This is what we've got to go by, is the black and white. It says it must be installed. And I asked, "Is it installed?"
We can install it.
No, no. The question is.
It has not been installed.
As of this date, four years henceforth, it's not installed.
It's not installed.
Okay.
What was the purpose of the monitoring well this for?
In case there's a release.
Oh, release of the spill.
Or they come back empty. There's a containment facility of 6,000 gallons. Tom has signed off on the containment. It's all sealed, the fire chief has been inspected.
I understand, but, but, but the fact is, all we have to look at, it says, "Must be installed." So, to me, it should have been there. It should have been there on, on June 23rd, 2010. And, 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 you know, I don't want to beat a dead husk, but if you'd have come before the board then, I suspect that the board would have had this information and would have required it at that point, four years ago. Unless it was fresh in everyone's mind, and this Tom Cusack could have attended the meeting and said, "Oh, we've changed our mind, or do some documentation." But, but all we have is the documentation before us, and it says that, you know, it's clear. The monitoring wells, and it's clear to me that, that the, you know, the other, the other drains should have been in. But, you know, that's.
I think.
So, I, so I'm a little miffed that, that four years later, you're standing here in front of us, need a, need a
I think the dry.
A review after the fact, and you've seen this, you've seen this information. This is your information that your attorney presented to me.
The information on the dry wells, if I do remember correctly, Ramsom, Oak, and Woody came together and, like he said, it's not there on the last page. They let it go because it was going to be an impervious surface. I believe there was stated that they couldn't tie the facility. If I tied the facility, I had to put the dry wells in.
Again, Tom, I'll make the same point. I read the letter. I understand what it says.
Again, it's a recommenda, it's up to the planning board.
No, this isn't a recommendation.
No, Walter, do you have to take every recommendation from every board, or do you have the right under site plan review to modify those recommendations?
Typically, what the board does, and you'll see it in the subdivision control regs on, I believe it's chapter three, there's actually a whole list of every board, including your boards on there too, the board of selectmen, everybody, makes a recommendation on an application. Most of the time, we don't get any input. When we do get input, we bring it up. That letter from Tom was sent over to our engineer's office, and they debated the issues that went back and forth. Sometimes we get the final findings on what did they come to. Sometimes it's just in a meeting, it's just mentioned, we initially wanted that, but we got something else in exchange. We usually don't get backup on it either. I know it's kind of, I can't tell you how many times we've asked the fire, the old fire chief, sometimes for stuff in writing, and because he was told by town council sometimes not to do that stuff, it didn't come back to us. But he would present what he wanted in the meeting. So, is it 100% of the time that we take all those recommendations to answer Mitch's question and put them in? No. There's usually some kind of fix that happens along the way.
I guess my, my question is, when you, when you issue a special permit, those conditions should be on there, and whatever the conditions are on that final page, that's it, right?
That's right. Typically, there is a special permit issues.
Right.
Okay.
Because we do it all the time.
With findings page, and you're going through. I think what we're all looking at is the initial June 23rd, and I think what's missing is, is the final findings.
Right.
So, we have all the preliminary stuff, but what we don't have is, is the final findings.
Do we think we have that somewhere?
I believe the planning board has what it has. The water sewer department from Tom, you may see notes in his file that release that particular letter.
Can you get, do you have them across the hall?
I can look.
Would you? Would you? Tell you what, while you're doing that, yeah, while you're doing that, we'll, we'll see if anyone else, anyone else that wants to speak in favor of it? If you can see that, we'll take you back.
Yeah, I'll see if we have it.
Well, I have one quick question. Mr. Leggles, do you actually have a copy of the special permit that the planning board issued to you?
I do not.
It should have been.
And it went over to the clerk.
Okay, but you never, but you never got it, okay?
That's what I was looking for in here.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Wally, yeah.
Okay. Because you should have gotten a copy.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of this?
Oh, without. I'm going to make a motion, we take a five-minute recess to get that back, because we want to.
Yeah, without the final permit and what the.
Who's going to get it?
Without the stipulations are, it's.
Well, that's what you're going to get.
Flying blind on whether you know how he complied or he did not comply.
Right, exactly.
So, I make, I make the motion, we take a five-minute recess, as long as we call it.
I second it.
Second it, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah.
Yes.
He didn't, he didn't.
Exactly what it is, right?
Wow, my head's really that big?
All set? Okay, thank you. I make a motion and we open at 8:30.
Second.
Second?
You can second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wally, you didn't have success finding them?
Mr. Chairman, I went through our files looking for plans and also our sub-file and I was unable to locate them in a very short period of time.
Is it my understanding that the addition as dry wells as proposed by WC Camet Engineering and the mortgaging wells as proposed by the Water District, Thomas Cusick Jr., would satisfy the planning board at this point?
Yes, the final engineering report review looks vice, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the applicant agrees?
I understand.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't trying to argue with you whether they were needed or not, I just didn't want you to get the impression that my client deliberately avoided doing them, that there was discussion.
I would never think that anyone appearing before the Board of Appeals would deliberately not do anything. I've been around long enough to know.
Thank you. But to end the discussion, we will agree to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I ask what that conclusion was on the comments. I don't understand what was just spoken.
Excuse me, I will. Let me just finish what I'm doing and we'll get to the other people here. Okay, all right. Any more comments? Anyone else who want to speak in favor? All right, now.
Last comment.
Now we're gonna... I'll explain to you.
Thank you.
Okay? The last comment was that they weren't able to find the conditions approval in five minutes as I asked. So I asked Mr. Sorensen, who happens to be the chairman of the planning board, if the planning board would accept as part of a special permit approval the conditions that the dry wells be installed as recommended by Camet Engineering. That's number one. And number two, that the mortgaging wells to satisfy the water sewer department, Thomas Cusick's request be installed. If that would satisfy the planning board, to his recollection, and he said that would. That's what was discussed. Dry wells and a mortgaging well, two things. Okay, if yes, all set, we're gonna... Anyone that is either opposed to this particular special permit?
I'd just like to say a couple of things. My name's Michael Totti.
Come right up.
Director abater to Brad's building.
Okay, hold on a minute now. You're Michael Totti?
Right.
And you're a director abater?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a question of you. How long have you lived there?
I just since, it was right around 2010.
When in 2010?
Well, it was back and forth. I own a house in Plastow, so I was getting... My mother had passed away, so I was getting situated to move to Roland. So I'm not exactly 100% sure when. I mean, it could be 2009, but...
I'd like to know. It's important for my next follow-up question.
I'd say it was probably around late 2009.
Okay. And you were an abater in late 2009?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes, still am.
Well, and you sold an abater?
Yes.
Well, this is 2014. So what changed between 2009, when you were an abater, and 2014 today?
I had talked to the building inspector on numerous occasions, face-to-face with him, and he told me that everything that they did there was legal. The same thing with you, Brett.
Hold on, hold on.
He told me the same thing.
Hold on.
Everything you did back there was legal.
Excuse me. You can't speak to them. Speak to the board. Now, if you didn't believe him at that time, there was a recourse, okay? The recourse was taken up as we did last meeting, let's see, it would have been in July, where the, there was a decision of the building inspector you didn't agree with. That would have been the time to discuss it, not four years henceforth.
I believed everything that he was telling me.
I'm telling you, the time to discuss that was four years ago.
I understand that now, right.
Thank you very much.
But I mean, and I do a lot of site work too, so.
Thank you very much. That's it. Excuse me. Anyone else want to speak?
Yes, I will.
Quickly. And then, and what is your involvement?
I was chair of the zoning board at the time. Mr. Totti wrote a complaint to the zoning board about this issue back in May 3rd, 2010. They stepped by town clerk. He brought it to the zoning board. For the zoning board's to remain autonomous and non-opinionated, we suggested as a board that he... We've received a letter. There was a comment we wrote in return, and he went other places.
Yeah.
McCabe, excuse me, Rick Greenwood.
So you were chairman of the...
He had been on the paper trio for four years with this town trying to resolve this problem. This hasn't started just yesterday.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Just silence a second. I'm gonna ask you a question.
Sure.
You were chairman of the Board of Appeals at the time this was built?
We didn't know it was built.
Hold on.
We didn't know anything was built.
Don't tell me that.
He complained about a building coming back.
Come on, come on. Don't even go there with me, okay?
We stayed out of this until we made it to the talk.
Don't even go there with me, okay?
You neither, because I was autonomous, right?
That no one knew, this gentleman right next door didn't know that this was being built next door four years ago, and you was the chairman? Don't even go there.
Special permit review process that's been violated.
Please, sit down.
And that can't be hidden.
Please, sit down. Thank you. I don't even wanna, I don't wanna hear any more from you tonight, okay?
If not, I'm gonna be contacted, because we got a list of...
You can do whatever you're gonna do.
That this town is witness right now.
Listen, I said no more, or you have to leave. You understand? I'm not gonna tolerate it.
What, are you gonna silence me from letting people know the truth?
I'm gonna... The truth? You were chairman of the board and you say that you didn't know anything about it? This is a small town. Don't go there with me. I know what's going on.
Not the zoning board.
You need to leave.
Review until there's a review in front of the board.
Please. You need to leave right now.
No, thank you. I still have information I want to give to you.
You will.
New industrial zone, you allow...
You will leave. Either you leave on your own, I'm gonna have you removed. Here's your choice. You remove, you either leave on your own or have removed. What do you want to do? It's up to you. You either leave, or I'll call PD and have you removed, either one.
What are you gonna have me removed by?
Because I, because I want you to be quiet, because I don't believe you.
I'm quiet right now.
All right.
I expect to be heard when I hear my hand.
No, no. No, no. Listen, we're not going there. I know what's happening here, and we're not going there. Is there anyone else who want to speak? Did you want to speak, Mr.?
Attorney.
I just simply want to apologize. Attorney Rachel Judkins. Yes, Rachel Judkins. Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate the moment to be heard. We are here today on, obviously, both the special permit in front of the zoning board, but also for the variance. Just want to simply say for the record that the required findings for the approval of a variance have not been met. They have not even been produced by the, by the petitioner in this, in this matter, so it's really all I want to say.
Okay.
I'm sure you've heard enough as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, do you have the application for variance?
I can just leave it.
Anyone else want to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead. Your name?
My name's Richard Greenwood.
Yep, and are you, and are you an abater?
No, I'm not a direct...
No, well, I'm not sure that, unless you're a director abater, you can speak. You don't have standing. I know, but this is a different, different issue. You have to be in a direct abater.
I would have bought it to be a abater within 300 feet of the property boundaries, Mr. Chair.
I, I think that we had a discussion about not speaking, didn't we? You said you weren't gonna speak.
I did not agree with that, so.
Well, you either agreed to it or you're leaving. You're either gonna agree or you're gonna leave. It's as simple as that.
You know what town council told me? If you have something removed from meeting, expect a lawsuit the next day when I was chair.
Yeah, well, that's right.
That's right.
You get in line.
I told you, I'm trying to keep the town from getting into lawsuits. That's what I'm here for tonight. You're not a dictator. You're a chair of a board functioning open process of review of...
Listen, I told you, I'm not, you need to be quiet. I'm not gonna say it again. The, getting back to the applicant, in the appeal, there are, there are three, there are three criterias that have to be met and... I'm just trying to find it on here. I got it somewhere. Number one, for the record, the applicant, and the first question was to explain why the enforcement of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise, to the applicant. And, and your answer was mistake of setbacks. Now, what do you, what exactly do you mean by that?
Mr. Chairman, all I, all I can do is read the building inspector's letter of June 28th, 2010, to the planning board and to the record. RE 16 Nelson Street, Mr. Sorensen, the setbacks for the garage are 30 feet from the street, 15 feet either side or rear. The permit was issued April 28th. There haven't been any appeals. I feel we should move forward with this issue. Signed Pat Skeena, building inspector and zoning enforcement officer. The hardship frankly would be if this permit is not allowed tonight, the building has been up for four years. For whatever reason, the abutters and the abutters to the abutter have not objected for four years. And obviously, my client has an ongoing business there. As you can see, he turned a dump site into a nice-looking business site that generates $1,500 in real estate taxes to the town, which I think is certainly a plus. And there's not much else I can say. I mean, the hardship is he relied on a professional engineer, Oak Engineering, who unfortunately is no longer in business, and he relied on the building inspector. He did not have an attorney at the time. He's not an attorney. Any oversight on his part, we'll apologize for, but I think frankly, he's a victim of circumstance. That's the best I can say.
Okay, the second question would be explain why the granting of this variance will not be substantial detrimental to the public good. And you wrote, "The building has been permitted, inspected, granted a special permit for the last four years." I think the special permit you're referring to would be from the planning board for the Aqafur.
Just, just for the record, I was retained after the application was filed, so Mr. Leggles prepared the application. I did not prepare it.
So, so...
But I, I'll address it that...
Yeah, yeah.
It's zoned, you know, they bought the lot, it's zoned industrial, and there's an auto body business 300 feet away that generates a lot more traffic. There's Chesterton and across the street. So I think a garage that Mr. Leggles has to store his vehicles, I think is a benefit for the town. He's not keeping his vehicles at his house in a residential district, or having his employees have to take them home to their houses. And, you know, I think there's a certain benefit to the town and to the neighborhood.
I just want to clarify, and I'm gonna paraphrase what you just said, that, that the, that the building has been permitted, inspected, and granted a special permit by the planning board for Aqafur for the last four years, and that there's an auto body business 300 feet away? And there was another one you mentioned.
Chesterton.
And Chesterton.
To manufacturing plant.
Manufacturing plant. How far away is that?
It's across Salem Street, across from the auto body shop.
Across the street, okay.
Well, across the street from the auto body shop.
Yeah, from auto bodying, okay. Okay, now, the third, the third criteria is explain why no degradation from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws of this ordinance. And this was left blank, so we need to have some type of information for that. What's that?
I didn't understand the question.
Oh, okay.
Again, I will go back to my, my earlier statement that the, it's a 6,000 square foot lot, and it would have been very difficult to construct this building, meeting those setback requirements. So we're arguing that it's a grandfathered lot, and therefore the residential setbacks would apply. Otherwise, the lot would have no use, because you're not allowed to put a residence in an industrial zone.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
I want to comment. I mean, last meeting we had, I argued that the setback violation was, that issue was resolved by an untimely appeal of the building permit itself. My research tells me that case law, there's an SJC case, I believe it's the Anino case, the appeal period for a, appeal from a building permit with setback violations limited to, was it, I believe, 20 days. So the statute could be extended to a longer period of time, I believe six years, but that's in the instance of where you built something, where there wasn't a permit issued. So there's, the SJC has determined that there's a duty of inquiry where there's a permit issued, a duty to inquire as to what's going on. And from what I've heard, that time period lapsed, and so that the, what may be legal, illegal, is now legal non-conforming, because that statutory right to appeal lapsed and it's time barred. My understanding of the law is that the, we lack jurisdiction over it, and furthermore, that any further court appeal, they would lack jurisdiction as well. So they're here today to, you know, attempt to try to cure and resolve this issue. So on the issue of the variance and specific findings, I'd like to go on the record as saying that they're unnecessary, as we, their time barred on the appeal process from that...
Hold on.
The special, special permits are definition.
I'm gonna make a motion to end the, the public appeal. Okay. And then, then we'll discuss it. All right. I'm making a motion to end it.
Second.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, continue, Dan. Thank you. Because I, I get where you're going. Keep going.
Well, on the special permit, you know, the zoning board has some discretion and, and the zoning requirements are much more stringent, very strict, and the appeal period is very strict as well.
On, on the appeal period, on the building permit?
Well, the, the violation of the setbacks from the, from...
Which would be the building permit?
Which of the, right, the building permit.
The time of the building permit issued to the time that the appeal is the 20-day that you're talking about.
It lapsed.
It lapsed.
And so for anyone to challenge the setback violation, whether it be, was it?
Fifty to...
Fifty to 25, or 50 to 15?
Thirty, thirty-five.
Fifty to 30.
Fifteen, yeah. Well, I, I, so here we say...
It's, it's a moot point.
Yeah. So, so the, from your thought, is the timeframe between the issuance of the permit and four years later can't be held accountable?
Against the owner of the property, yes.
Okay, I get that. Any other discussion? Jane, you have anything?
No.
As far as the special permit goes, from what I've heard, they're willing to add the...
Yeah, I understand, yeah, that, that...
Add the compliance requirements to safeguard the environment, and I think that's reasonable.
I, yeah, I was just gonna say that I feel like you tried to take every step that you knew was right. You relied on the building inspector, relied on planning board. I feel like you didn't just slap this thing up overnight and pray that nobody noticed.
Correct.
I do, I do believe you did as much due diligence as you knew to do without an attorney, and I believe that you had every intention of going by the rules.
Correct.
I do believe that. However, it's now a mess, as we all know. So I think we gotta figure out how to make it feasible for everyone.
All right. Jane, you don't have anything?
No.
Okay. Chris?
No, I'm good.
I think I gotta figure it out. The, the, I would make a motion that the after the, after the, after the fact, this is, this is an after-effect special permit is approved and, and subject to the following stipulations. Now, your hours of operation, what do you have for hours there? You don't have any hours.
We don't have any hours.
There are no hours. It's just, it's just...
Usually what we do is...
It's storage or whatever.
Well, what we usually do is pick up the trucks probably around seven fifteen. Leave at seven thirty. We're back around dark. You know, if somebody runs out of oil, like, we try to put them off till the next day.
Gotcha. Okay.
Sometimes it's...
You have no signs.
Correct. There's no signs. There's nothing.
Would you leave in the middle of the night for an emergency?
Try not to, but if there's a seventy-five year old lady and she needs a help, we'll send a service truck out before we send an oil truck out because we know, you know, there is a residence there.
Okay. There's no outside parking, is there?
No.
Because that's part of the approval, was it inside?
We use, we use the, on either side of the lot, you know. There's parking on either side of the building. Of course, some vehicles are just left and then picked up after the trucks are brought back.
And so how many? Would it be three?
Two.
Two.
One guy has his own service truck. People consult with him.
Is there lighting there?
Yeah, all four sides of it.
What type of lights?
I think they're RAV lighting. That's the correct term.
What is it?
RAV lighting. We hired electricians there. We just put them all up and...
Can you spell that?
I think it's R-A-V lighting, whatever's necessary to be code.
Is this cutoff luminaire? They just go down?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And the maximum square foot of that building is, it was changed. What is it? Is it thirty by forty or...
Thirty by sixty.
Thirty by sixty would be eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred square feet.
Eighteen hundred? All right. Then, then this is the motion that I would make relative to the special permit, that the hours of operation is seven fifteen till dark, except for emergency calls. There are no signs. Parking is limited to two personal vehicles. Lighting is four sides of cutoff luminaire type. Maximum square footage of the building is limited to eighteen hundred square feet. All the plans submitted will become part of this agreement. If the proposal is in the Aqafur Protection District, the applicant shall meet all requirements as deemed necessary by the Groveland Planning Board. And here's where I'll add. A. Dry wells to be added as per WC Camet Engineering. On letter dated June twenty-third, twenty-third, two thousand ten. And B will be a monitoring well installed to satisfy the Town of Groveland Water and Sewer Department, letter dated six twenty-three, June twenty-third, two thousand ten. And number eight would be subject to all of Groveland Board of Health Rules and Regulations, subject to all laws, rules, regulations, inspections, and others of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Special permit is subject to recall if the board receives any written complaints. Eleven, no action on the special permit. Our extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until a copy of this decision is recorded in the Essex Southern District Registry of Deeds for the county and district in which the land is located, and indexed in the index under the name of the owner or as recorded and noted on the owner's certificate of title and received a said transaction delivered to the building inspector prior to the issuance of an ARKMC permit. The special permit is nontransferable. If the rights authorized to the applicant and are properly owned by said special permit are not exercised within two years from the date of granting said special permit, filing date with the town clerk, the board's decision, then such permit rights shall become null and void unless a substantial use thereof has commenced except for good cause or in case of a permit construction, if construction has yet begun by such date for good cause. And the last one would be that the town clerk shall certify on a copy filed decision that twenty days has elapsed since the filing and that no appeal has been filed or such appeal has been filed and that is, has been dismissed or denied. The duplicate of said documents shall be mailed to the applicant and/or owner. Give a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
All right.
Aye.
So we're going to talk about the other one after, but Julie, want to give them the spiel on how this works?
The decision will be kept up within fourteen days. I would say to the authority, and you need to hold on to it for twenty days. The trial period that I will do is I will send you a copy of the decision. You need to come in and pick up the original decision and bring it down to the registry of deeds and have it registered, and you need to bring it stamped back to Mr. Grove.
After the twenty days.
After the twenty days, yeah.
Is that clear?
Okay. Relative to the variance. Okay. This is a unique situation, whereas the applicant relied on information, and we have a letter signed by the building inspector dated June twenty-eighth with the setbacks being thirty feet and fifteen.
Mr. Jane has done a knockout job. I hope you can keep everybody's timeless.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Professional acting that you use as a representative. But next week I'll send a load of select material embarrassant to this community.
Yeah, good. Yeah.
And I'm ashamed that you represent my town.
Fine. Thank you very much. You have a good evening.
Be glad when you're gone.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. You have a nice evening. Relative to the variance, this is probably a pretty unique situation where the building inspector gave the wrong information. However, in some regards, I'm cognizant of the fact that the undersized lot that doesn't allow residential setbacks couldn't be built with a commercial setbacks. So there's certainly a hardship here. I mean, even if, even if it came in before, it still seems like a hardship because you can't build it. It's sort of like, you've got the lot here, and you said, hey, here's a lot. It's an industrial zone, but guess what? You can't use it because you can't meet setbacks. Well, that doesn't make sense.
Right.
So based on that, I think that the criteria, and I'll read them. The three questions that are part of the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter forty, Section ten says, "Explain why the enforcement of the zoning laws would involve substantial hardship, financial and/or otherwise." And I would say that if you see the letter dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand ten, signed by Pat Skeena, that states that the setbacks are thirty and fifteen. This is what the applicant relied on, and I think that at this particular point, that particular, that section is satisfied. Relative to the second question that needs to be addressed is, "Explain why the granting of this special not substantial detrimental to the public good." And this is that the, you know, the building has been permitted, or a permit was issued, the building was built four years ago. There's an auto body shop within three hundred feet of it, and across the street, there's another...
Chesterton.
Chesterton Manufacturing. So I mean, I don't see that there's a detrimental to the public good, and it's obvious by the pictures that were submitted that this was a pretty rough looking lot before they improved it. So I think that that's been satisfied. And that, "Explain why there is no delegation from the intent or purpose of the zoning laws of this ordinance." I think, I think that the prior fact that it's a six thousand square foot lot, residential can't be built in that zone, and, you know, you can meet setbacks. It's sort of, it doesn't, that doesn't work. So, and to further add to the appeal dilemma, I tend to agree with Dan at the end, who said that the twenty days has lapsed. So with that in mind, I would make a motion that the variance, based on those criteria, be approved.
I second it.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Same thing. She does the paperwork, and then you pick it up, you go back and forth, and that's it.
So there's two separate things?
Okay. All right. Moving it along.
I'll say. Moving along. Okay. Minutes?
I thought I passed them back down.
I never did see them.
Okay.
Nope. Nope.
All right.
We'll skip, we'll skip down to...
Really?
Okay.
He's been holding on.
Are you even holding them down there?
Okay. Did you, did you find any, any issues that you had with the minutes?
No, they were great.
Uh, wait a minute.
I wasn't there, so I'm not helping.
I wasn't either.
Wait a minute. Hold on.
Oh, wait, that's January eleventh.
Right, that's...
That's not down.
I don't know if that's Jane's file. That might, that's, that's the old one.
January eleventh.
Then, no, I don't have it.
It's September, actually. So it's the August?
No, no August. July.
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 I don't, I passed them back down.
Yeah, I never did see them.
Well, why don't we listen to the team? I'll keep looking for them.
I don't have any. Look at your table.
Do you have any of your pile over there?
I'm going to look. We got, we got some...
Invoices.
Here. Want me to sign the jacket?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to borrow my pen.
Big bag, big bag.
I don't have any.
Jane, you sure you don't have any?
No, I just, no.
I did.
Oh.
Did you see them?
I don't have them. Here, look through all my papers. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we got them.
These are one of the...
She was for...
Stop and sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. This also needs to go in the record too, to Julie. That was submitted by the attorney.
Doesn't it usually cost more to put a notice in the newspaper?
Everything going down.
Figure it out one night.
Hmm?
I think we figured it, it actually used to be less. I think it used to be like two sixty-one. Now it's like two ninety-one, which is...
Now, would I give you the...
This bill for two sixty-one for two notices.
Did I give it sheet yet?
No.
I will. We'll just go with that.
Right, because you have to do it twice.
Well, I understand.
Yeah. It's like two sixty-one.
But this is less than...
No.
You normally do.
Well, that was only for one, not for everybody. That was just legal. Maybe not the others. Maybe that hasn't come in yet.
Okay. I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes of July second, two thousand fourteen, as submitted. Second?
I haven't read them.
I wasn't there.
No, I haven't, I haven't read them.
I wasn't there, so I can't.
So I don't want to say yes.
Oh, you weren't there?
I was, I was there, yes, but have I read the minutes? No.
Okay, read them. I'll get, I just, I just read them. Go ahead. You got a question?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So the meeting in July took place on the second, not the third?
It was the third.
Third.
Was it the third?
Yeah, it was the third. How about the, what the other stuff we got?
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I'm reading Julie's notes on her invoice, and it says, "Attended meeting for July third."
Good, okay, good.
It was the third.
All right.
Okay, so that's fine. I mean, who has?
No meeting for the minutes, please.
Wow, that's a delay on TV.
Yes, you're just noticing that now.
Yeah, watch.
God sakes, can you keep up?
That could get me out of a lot of trouble.
Actually, only for the fourteen seconds.
Parking happens for the two seconds.
Oh, boy. Okay. Can I show this stuff here? Is this you?
Yeah.
You never told me a job.
No.
What happened to this? I thought she was our... I thought she was the attorney.
Yeah, but that guy was the civil rights guy. That's why he's on there.
Okay. I ever have a civil rights issue.
For the stuff here going, moving. And you have, you have this package as well.
It doesn't seem like it's too aggressive.
Do you have this package? Could you get over there? Did you fill these? I don't understand why these are...
I don't understand why Groveland's just...
All right.
There you go.
Relative to the invoice...
Sorry they're lengthy.
No, no, we... Given invoice, two thousand ten dash, two thousand fourteen dash ten invoice number, the date is nine, three, fourteen, Julie House, St. Louis Appeals, in the amount of eight hundred ninety dollars and eighteen cents. The motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I wasn't there. You can't vote on them, right?
On what? On paying Julie?
Oh, I thought it was the notes.
Shame on you.
It's all right.
Aye.
Charlie, are you listening to us?
Oh, yes.
And then we have...
And the rest of the world.
We have Eagle Tribune.
Better be on a three second delay.
Eight thirty-one, fourteen.
Got to edit it.
In the...
Thirteen seconds.
It's it. What you see is what you get. And all this sophisticated equipment now.
I know.
Wow, it's in color.
It's how it is.
So this is the Eagle Tribune bill in the amount of two sixty-one eighty. I need a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve?
Okay, second?
Second it.
Any of us in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Happy?
Yeah, I am happy. I'm sorry they're long.
Oh, my God. Hold on, long would be good.
Shush, you. Charlie, we're keeping it real, okay?
Yeah. Under open discussion on the June fifteenth... But would you get the information of new ordinance? I don't know if you were...
No.
Yeah, I got one for you. On June fifteenth, the selectman has requested that we attend...
September fifteenth.
Excuse me, September fifteenth, yeah, to discuss the new proposed ordinance. And I've, I've read through it. My only comments would be that it...
And this?
Yeah, it appears to me that there's an... Yeah, it appears to me that there's an awful lot of information that's, that's, uh, put on a chart, and I think you're looking for danger in that regard, because the type of government that we have, which is, uh, you know, you have a, a town meeting in April. If, for, for some reason, something isn't on there, you could be a year to try to correct that information. It seems it's trying to be too comprehensive to me to, to allow for the gray areas. It's, 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 zoning isn't all black and white, and, and if you, it's, it's, it, it appears that there's, there's an awful lot of information that's on those sheets. I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with working with, with ordinances with, with much more detail and much more, uh, information that has a lot less on the charts than that. So, that, that would be my, I think that they're, they're looking, I think it could be a problem if someone came in, that something doesn't fit that criteria, they can't do it. And then, even though it would be perfect, and it would fit, you can't do it till you go to a town meeting and change it. So, that, that, I, I think that could be an issue.
Are you sure? I thought there was something in there that said-
Well-
That if it wasn't on the list, it could go for, it would need a special permit or something.
I think, maybe, but I think that's, and that's, and you're faced with, if, if we're faced with the same, yeah, we're ma- we're making, uh-
Special exceptions for people in, in appeals and-
All the time.
That just opens up Pandora's box.
Yeah, it just creates disputes.
Yeah. So, did you get a chance to read?
I did read it, yes. Thank you.
I already went through it.
There are a lot of, and uses that are not permitted by law, right? Like a, a movie theater, what's wrong with that, you know? It's just, you can't have it.
It's, I think it's, it's a little restrictive in, in some areas, but also a little comprehensive that, uh, and for the size of the town, size of the ordinance, I think it's very, very restrictive. I don't know, I'm, I'm, that's, I think someone put a lot of work into it, but it's not my cup of tea. I mean, I, I, I could show you an ordinance that, that is twice as thick with, with twenty-seven zones in it, that's nowhere near as restrictive as that.
Yeah, there's restrictions on every, everything.
That would be my only, my only, my only comments, but everyone read it and, and try to make that meeting. Relative to the minutes of July thirteen, two thousand fourteen, we need a motion to approve that.
July third.
Yeah, I got it, July third. Yep, two thousand fourteen.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second it. Second it, Jane? I'll second it. Go ahead, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's right, Jane, that's right.
We weren't there.
You weren't there, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
I think you start competing with him more.
There's no competition. Everyone gets a trophy. There's no competition. There's no competition.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
At nine fifteen.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Charlie, we adjourned at nine fifteen.
Hey, Tom, did a good job tonight.
Bang-up job, I think. That was good.
Tom, I don't care what other people say about you. You, 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 you serve the public.
Hey, where do I leave?
I'll walk you out to your car.
Watch out for flying blankets.
See, this is what I always try to catch on the cable channel, is a selectman's meeting. I've never, I've yet ever seen one, ever. Really? Well, I'm not gonna rush home and wash-
I was there tonight, I walked in on them, so I was like, you know.
You, you do get a lot.
We started talking about, you know, strawberry fields and, you know, maybe having a movie theater and a roadie, uh, it was a good meeting. You know? Gotta raise some money with it. Talked about maybe selling off a piece of it, maybe leasing out some of it as an industrial, uh, zone. You can lease out spots.
Well, that was the- Turn a profit on that. Five billion dollar waste of money. That was the arguing, fire department. The fire- South station.
What about it?
They were fighting with the chief, right there. It was a big argument.
On my side of town, they were fighting?
Yeah. The chief had done something that they didn't agree with. So, they went before the selectmen to have them straighten it out.
Oh, I see.
Whatever it was. Groveland politics, I come from Georgetown.
There was an executive session at six thirty, apparently.
But, yes, there was-
More refined?
What, Georgetown?
Georgetown politics and more refined.
They've learned to be very careful on live TV.
I know, that was perfect. That was perfect. It's like, you were there.
For me, Tom, you shut, you shut a mosque because you-
You wasn't gonna come in here and just muck it up. He was just gonna muck it up. Of course. He was just gonna muck it up. You know that? No, that worked out perfectly. He was just gonna muck it up. I saw it coming.
But I think, well, um, I don't, I, 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 no, I can't, no.